Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the January 24th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners for Blue Earth County. If we'd all stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance is the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We hit the agenda review, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move the agenda. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. It passes. And it looks like we jump right into County Ditch Number 12. Start this off. Welcome to County Ditch Number 12 Repair Hearing. Please sign the attendance sheet at the back of the room if you haven't already. We will now have Drainage Staff Greg Austinson go over the judicial jurisdictional documents.
The purpose of today's meeting is we have a petition pursuant to Minnesota 103E.715 for repairs to a public drainage system which was received by Blue Earth County Property Environmental Resources Staff on June 14th, 2022. This petition asks to complete Phase 3 of County Ditch 12 repairs. Phase 3 includes a cleaning, tree removal, and the construction of a weir at the outlet of a wetland. Phase 1 was completed in 2015. Phase 2 was started in 2017 and finished in 2018. At today's public hearing for the proposed repairs to County Ditch 12, we're asking for the Drainage Authority's approval of the attached findings in order as drafted or subsequently amended. As far as others, there was a proof of mailing that was... Notices were mailed on December 27th, 2022. Notice of the hearing was published in the Mankato Free Press. And that's it for jurisdictional documents.
All right. Can I get a motion and a second to accept the affidavit into the legal record?
I'll move an acceptance.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. We will now hear from the engineer, Chuck Brandl, regarding the provided engineer's report.
All right. Good morning. I have Jen Whitmer with me. She's going to give most of the reports. She'll put it together.
Excuse me. What's her name?
Jen Whitmer.
Jen?
Yeah.
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks.
So we've got a PowerPoint. And we do have some drone footage of the area, and Jen's going to go over that. This was a petitioned repair. And like Mr. Austinson said, this is Phase 3. Landowners had asked us to not do Phase 3 at the time because of the cost of a structure and some wetland issues. And we'll go over those, and we actually have that all worked out. So I think it worked out well to weight. So, go ahead, Jen.
All right. So here is the 560 feet of linear ditch that we're working on, on this system. So you can see there's a lot of trees in the way. Here's the existing watershed. It is just east of the city of Mankato. It drains about 1,400 acres. And there is a large wetland in the middle of the system. History, it's all within Mankato Township. It's just under 1,500 total acres, 48 feet of fall, hydrologic soil class CD, so it's mostly clay soils. And there's agricultural, residential, and commercial land within the watershed. Established in 1910, cleaned most recently, I guess, in 2018 in a multi-phase cleaning project. No registered improvements. And there's about 4,000 feet of open ditch that are actually within the city boundary, so they're maintained by the city of Mankato instead of the Drainage Authority. Those are highlighted in orange. Here are a couple of photos of the site that we're working on. So the line across the middle of the screen is the open ditch. Here is looking from the wetland to the open ditch. So you can see there's a lot of wetland vegetation in there. Lots of trees. There's a plywood bridge across the open ditch, and that is holding up a lot of dirt and being a pretty big obstruction to the open ditch. And there's lots of trees and vegetation, so there's no clear path for the water to flow through in the open ditch. We surveyed the system in 2016 and again last year. There's about 3, 2 to 3 feet of extra sediment in the open ditch. So that's part of the project to be cleaned out.
Yeah. One thing to add, the DNR did what's called an ordinary high-water study on the wetland itself back when we did some of the previous phases and determined runoff elevation for the wetland that they would permit. So our proposed design is we've worked back and forth with the DNR. We actually did meet with the city of Mankato pre-petition because there's some development going on to the north, just to make sure that this outlet would be working. And I think that's part of why the landowners petitioned is they wanted to make sure they had an outlet that wasn't just set by grass and dirt, but that could actually be maintained.
Proposed design, so we will be cleaning about 560 feet of open ditch and adding an outlet structure to the wetland just to control the outlet and kind of keep flooding down in the area. So proposed work, we'll be cleaning out all the trees within the buffer along the open ditch just to clear things up and make it easier to maintain. And then we'll be clearing out some of the wetland vegetation just so that the water has a clear path to get to the open ditch.
Technically, the ditch system starts in the middle of the wetland, but we can't excavate material in the wetland because that would be violating the wetland rules. But we can remove vegetation. And working with DNR staff, they've approved that. We just need to do the final paperwork for the wetland vegetation.
Yep. And like I said, we'll be cleaning out the open ditch and setting a maintained water level for the wetland with the outlet weir. Here's a detail for the weir. It'll be a steel sheet pile weir. It'll look similar to this.
It'll be 6 feet at the bottom, and then 3 to 1 slopes up.
Yep. Similar geometry to the existing open ditch, so it shouldn't prove too much of a restriction.
It should look very similar to that picture when we're done. That's not this project, but that's...
The same type.
Yeah. Where we clean out the vegetation into the wetland so you have a way for the water to get to the structure, and then you can maintain an elevation at that structure.
Yep.
We did work back and forth with DNR staff on different options, and their preferred option was a steel sheet pile weir, so that's what we're going with.
Yep. It has a long lifespan, so it should be easy to maintain in the future. For this project, we did get a Conservation Partners Legacy Grant, $50,000, which pays for essentially the whole wetland outlet structure. We got it through the Excavated Conservation Partners Legacy Grant, and that was awarded in October of 2022. Total project cost, so the repair separated out from the outlet structure is just under $40,000. The wetland outlet structure with construction and the structure itself is about $61,000. So total project cost of $101,000. With the Conservation Partners Legacy Grant, that's $50,000. So total project cost for landowners is $51,000. And then the repair items include cleaning the open ditch, removing the trees, removing the wetland vegetation.
Just before the meeting, one of the landowners talked to me, and they'll probably talk also is they'd like to add a crossing downstream of the structure, so maybe we'll talk about that after the public comment. That's something we could definitely add to it, but that would be, in my opinion, and I think they probably would agree, that'd be 100% their cost because that'd be a private crossing.
We've done a lot of the permitting work already on this, so we got a DNR Public Waters Work Permit to put a control structure on the wetland. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers approved the project in December. Will apply for a wetland vegetation removal permit once we have bids and know who the contractor is going to be. And we got approval from the Wetland Conservation Act Technical Evaluation Panel. They approved no impact to the wetland in November.
So a little different than your standard ditch project because we're doing work inside of a wetland. We're controlling a structure. And that structure would be part of the ditch system and maintained by the ditch system. But again, we've got a grant from the state with DNR support to pay.
Yeah. And I forgot to mention, the wetland is a public water, so that's why we needed the Public Waters Work Permit and all of the additional permitting and review.
That's also why it qualifies for the grant because it's public water, and those grants are available for public water structures, so...
Yep. So in conclusion, the open ditch, the section that we're looking at, is in disrepair. There isn't a real outlet on the wetland currently, so we're proposing to restore the open ditch to its originally designed conditions. And we want to put a wetland outlet structure to kind of aid in maintenance of water levels and prevent any flooding just by assorted debris hanging out in the ditch. So the project as presented is cost-effective, practical, and feasible, and we've presented its necessity. Therefore, the project will be a public benefit and contribute to the public welfare of the area, and therefore, the project should be considered for approval as described in the repair report.
If we decide, if we get public comment to add a culvert, which I think we will, if we include that, my recommendation would be to size that to the capacities that are downstream and match those capacities. So we're matching capacities. It wouldn't be a restriction on the system. And that would be a private landowner cost. But again, I'm just bringing it up because I'm aware of it before the meeting, so... Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Jen and Chuck, thank you for that report. At this time, we will open the hearing for public comment. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We also ask that you limit your comments to no more than 3 minutes. And I'll ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Anyone wishing to make a public comment for County Ditch Number 12, public hearing, please come to the podium.
Ken Wilmus, 589-28211, Mankato. And I'm the one that asked about getting a crossing put in from field to field there, and I realize I'll have to pay for that. And I want that included in the bid as an extra. And if I decide not to do it because it's too much money, I won't do it. And then I just want to make sure the cleared wetland is maintained in the future by spraying. I guess I kind of talked to Chuck about that a little bit, but because that ditch extends right into the slough, that's actually part... On the one map here, it says cleared wetland vegetation. So I just want to make sure that the county continues to maintain that along with the rest of the ditch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken. Would anyone else like to make a public comment for County Ditch Number 12, public hearing? And for the last time, anyone would like to make a public comment for County Ditch Number 12, public hearing? If there are no additional comments from the public, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring the items to the board for further action.
I would move approval of the repairs with the recommendation from Chuck to add a culvert for the Wilmus's that they may drop if they are not interested in doing it. Is that an adequate motion?
Does that cover the findings in order?
Yeah. Probably best if you would include that portion.
With the findings in orders outlined by staff.
I'll second that.
We got a motion to approve the findings in order, and we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I would like to say that, you know, after the redistricting, I actually have a ditch.
Sure.
I never had a ditch before, but now I have a ditch.
Welcome to the real county.
And you have me as your commissioner, too, so...
Mankato Township's mine.
That's a good thing. You sure?
Yeah, the township is.
Mankato Township's mine.
Or the whole thing?
I think it doesn't matter.
You have part of it.
All right.
I'm good with that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against, the same. It passes, and this concludes the County Ditch Number 12 hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Chuck.
And I'm going to start right up to County Ditch Number 57. Welcome to the County Ditch Number 57 hearing and for additional damages and repair work for portions of County Ditch 57. We will have Ryan Henneker read jurisdictional documents for this hearing. Go ahead, Ryan.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Good morning, Ryan. Today's hearing is for additional damages for County Ditch 57. Quick memo, Blue Earth County Ditch 57 is a public drainage system which is primarily located in Beaufort and Mapleton Townships. Repair Report 22-007 was approved by the Drainage Authority in April of 2022 involving the installation of a new bench area for future maintenance and cleaning of the system. As a result of the repair work, additional perennial vegetative buffer areas needed. Therefore, additional damages are payable... Damages payments are required. Under Minnesota Drainage Code 103E, viewers must be appointed anytime additional damages are to be paid as part of a public drainage system. The primary area of construction, additional damages, is in Section 27 of Beaufort Township. At today's hearing, we are seeking the approval of drafted viewers' report as well as the Couple jurisdictional documents for mailers. Landowners were mailed notices on December 27th, 2022, and the public affidavit ran in the Free Press on January 3rd, 10th, and 17th. That is all I have.
All right. I would move to accept the affidavits in the legal record. All right. Got a motion to accept the jurisdictional documents and affidavits in the legal record. Can we get a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And against? And that passes. We will now hear from engineer Chuck Brandl to discuss the repair report to the Drainage Authority.
Good morning again. Chuck Brandl with ISG. I have Jacob Mueller with me, and he's going to go through most of our repair report. Just a refresher on CD 57. It's 6,000 acres, fairly flat system, established in 1921 as a tile system. An open ditch was extended in 1975. In 2010, there was a major improvement that included adding storage, a two-stage ditch, and upsizing the capacity of the system, along with some cleaning. So, go ahead, Jacob.
So some of the issues seen after that repair work was some sloughing, like Ryan said, localized in Section 27 of Beaufort Township. To remedy this, those needed to be repaired. And to repair those and clean out the open ditch, benching was required to access those portions. Yeah, that covers that pretty well. So part of the design to achieve this was to create those benches I just mentioned. As you can see from the map here, we're entirely located within Section 27 and entails five different constructed benches in a line on either side of 586, I believe. Here's kind of another view that kind of gives you a nice aerial view of what's going on here. 586 is right there in the middle, and the benches are extending to the northeast there up towards its outlet.
So the red bench areas have actually been constructed, and there's one orange area that hasn't been constructed yet. But they do require additional property to... That will not be... The buffer essentially gets pushed back, and those benches are there because a long reach can't quite reach the bottom of the ditch. So you bench down so a long reach excavator can reach down and grab those.
So, looking a bit more closely at this, each of these proposed benches would add to the width of the buffer like Chuck just discussed. And here we kind of have those areas tabulated on which landowners would be seeing what kind of damages extending into their property. It's a little hard to read on this map, but we have them tabulated right up here. Yeah, here's another view of the bench, and you can really see it's at such a width where an excavator can get down there and clean and slope back up to the newly proposed top of ditch.
The location of the benches is shown. You can see we have a township road on one side, so we're limited that we pretty much have to put them on the east side. And as we go around the corner, we just decided to keep that going on the south side so that equipment can stay on that same side of the ditch when they clean.
So here's some cross-sectional views. And again, the purpose is just to allow those long-reach excavators to clean the bottom of the ditch, maintain that in the future and presently. And yeah, the results of that is just an expanded buffer.
We've created a template for... We've taken a few local machines, created a template so we can actually measure based on the side slope of the ditch, the depth. We can put that template in so we know the height to put that bench in. And we've done this in multiple counties in the area, so we've got... I think we took a handful of long-reach machines and took an average, so...
So looking into the quantified damages that each landowner would see for each bench, that's tabulated here, mostly under like a quarter of an acre. So, there's that. Looking forward into project costs, that would be the construction and damages from that permanent buffer easement.
Let's just skip to the next one.
Yep. So the total for that was going to be around $105,000. And again, that includes open ditch cleaning, slough repair, that bench construction, and then finally, that land acquisition.
Typically, we wouldn't get involved in this small of a project, but to survey the benches and get the correct area that was needed, that's why Ryan and Craig got us involved in this. So we surveyed and calculated that out.
So to conclude, the benching presented and constructed was necessary to uphold the ability to clean and maintain the open ditch. The project as presented is cost-effective, practical, and feasible, and its necessity has been presented to uphold and maintain that ditch. And the project is a public benefit and contributes to the public welfare of the area, and therefore, the project should be considered for approval as described in the repair report.
And I think next, the viewers will give a value to what those benches should be. Any questions of us?
Do we do, Mr. Chair, do we do clarifying questions now or after public comment? Go ahead. The bench isn't the bench. The bench is something else, correct? So is the bench part of the buffer or the bench part of the ditch?
It's part of the ditch.
The ditch.
So the buffer would be up above that.
So it wouldn't have the same buffer rights and responsibilities as the top buffer, I'll call it?
Correct. So it's part of the side slope of the ditch, and then you still have a grass buffer above and beyond that. So essentially, what we've calculated is by adding the bench, the grass buffer moves out, and the additional damages are really the grass buffer moving out because we've had to push the top of the ditch over.
So it's not... But it will be a grass ditch then, or basically a low buffer?
Correct.
I guess my question is, how do we deal with haying and grazing or other buffer things on the top buffer? Would they imply for this, or is this part of the ditch where...
It's part of the ditch side slope.
Okay.
So the ditch system should maintain it if there needs to be mowed or if for some reason part of it sloughed or eroded. It'd just be like the bottom of the ditch, but it's still part of the ditch.
Anything else? No. Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right.
Thank you. Thanks.
Now, we're going to have... Thank you, Chuck. We will now hear from Dan Ruby and Ron Ringquist on the submitted viewers' report on this proceedings.
Hello. My name is Dan Ruby. Ron Ringquist was the lead on this project. He is practicing being retired, so...
That's not a bad thing.
That's not a bad thing. I'm happy for him. As per request of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we herewith submit the following on the additional damages required for the repair of Blue Earth County Ditch Number 57. Damages were awarded for the improvement and buffer area previously. The additional right-of-way being required will be from additional area not previously acquired. This is .62 acres that will be taken from four parcels, being the Trio, August Trio parcel, and three Nino parcels. I hope I said that right. The total damages, I believe, is $7,440. This is from... This was from full tillable acres. They were tilled last year. They were farmed last year. And when Ron did the evaluation as an appraiser, he treated the new purchases as good... The properties he compared were good farmland properties, and the property was $12,000 an acre. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for that report. We will now open this up to a public comment portion of the hearing. Those individuals wishing to make comment about the proposed viewers' report or repair report for portions affecting County Ditch 57 may do so at this time. Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We ask that you limit your comments to no more than 3 minutes, and I will ask Mr. Meyer to keep time. Is there anyone wishing to speak on the County Ditch 57 hearing? Is there anyone wishing to speak on County Ditch 57 hearing? And for the last time, I've got to say this three times. Is there anyone wishing to make comment on County Ditch 57? Seeing no more additional comments, I will close the public comment portion of this hearing and bring it back to the Drainage Authority. Is there any other additional questions from the board?
Just one clarification, Chuck. It's my understanding you're building this shelf now, the bench now?
Some of it has been...
Has already been built?
Yep. And some of it hasn't.
Was there a reason why we didn't incorporate that into the original plans 10, 12 years ago? Is it just...
This area wasn't part of the improvement.
Okay.
This is outside of the improvement area. It wasn't part of the petitioned improvement, so we... so we didn't.
That makes sense.
We didn't do it at that time.
All right. That was the only question I had, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anybody else? All right. Can I get a motion to accept the provided draft findings in order, accepting the viewer's report and repair report for County ditch 57?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And against, same, and that passes. Are we done?
Thank you, Dan.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn the County ditch 57 hearing? A second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes. Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alrighty. I'll wait a few minutes.
Thank you to the landowners that come in case there are questions. Always appreciate that.
Yeah, it really helps. Wait a few minutes for people to leave.
Thank you, Jen and Jacob.
All right. Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. The planning and zoning staff are here to represent their action items. This is a public hearing, and a public comment will be allowed in just a moment. I'd ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves to the record and introduce the items before the board. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Constance, Senior Land Use Planner.
And?
Scott Salisbury, also Senior Land Use Planner.
Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Yep.
Good morning, Board. PC 01-23 is a request for review and approval from Lucas and Heather Bundy for an interim use permit to operate a short-term rental unit in the shoreline of Madison Lake. The property is located at 22484 Lakeview Road, Madison Lake, Minnesota 56063, and is described as Lot 6 of the Lakeview Heights subdivision. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the staff report. The applicants were not present, and there was no public comment. Members of the commission indicated their familiarity with the applicants and the property. The applicants met with the township, and the township has concerns with the narrow right-of-way of the road. The township has indicated there shall be no parking associated with the short-term rental on the township road. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff and with conditions recommended by staff. The board action is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. At this time, we'll open for public comment on PC 01-23. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and I will ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 01-23? Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 01-23? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 01-23? If not, we will close the public comment portion.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any discussion, but just want to thank the staff. This is, I think, our first short-term rental license to go out, so thank you for all your work in getting that policy put in place, and I think it's going to be beneficial to Blue Earth County.
Several more in the pipeline as well.
And I understand that this didn't go very, really smooth for the applicants, but they were very understanding.
It is a robust application process.
So, thank you.
I'm learning from us.
We try to keep it simple, but sometimes you just can't.
And any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And against, the same, and that passes. Thank you. All right. We will, at this time, open for public hearing, our public comment on PC 02-... No, not yet. We need to, we will, if you'd go to PC 02-23, go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Scott Salisbury, Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning. Now, PC 02-23 is Blue Earth County's application for an ordinance amendment to modify the definition of a bluff impact zone in Chapter 14 of the Shoreland Zoning Section of the Code, Chapter 20, the Land Division Section of the Code, and then Chapter 24, the zoning chapter of the code. The ordinance amendment also includes an addition of an actively eroding bluff in Chapter 24, the zoning chapter of the code, as well as modifications to the Erosion Control Section for additional standards for bluff impact zones and actively eroding bluffs. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the staff report. There was no public comment. Members of the Planning Commission discussed the amendment. The discussion included the amendment itself, the potential that the amendment may question projects further from bluffs, and add a disclosure, or they also discussed the potential to add a disclosure statement for permits in the future for properties that are located in close proximity to bluff impact zones, the potential for a waiver or forfeiture of eligibility for buyouts for development in bluff areas, and also the need for education on development around actively eroding bluffs in general. Following discussion, the Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation for approval of the amendment to the county board based on the findings in the staff report. And the board action is adoption of the ordinance amendment based on the findings and recommendations of the Planning Commission.
At this time, we'll open for public comment on PC 02-23. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 02-23? Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC-02-23? And for the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC 02-23? Is there any comments from the board? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I would move the adoption of the ordinance amendment based on findings recommended by the Planning Commission.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
That was just a long process. We've been working on this for years. Again, it's more restrictions that we don't care to put in place, but it is a very needed policy to have in place. And from my understanding, it probably won't affect a lot of people that are working through this process, but will protect some that are, so.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, the same? That passes. If staff would read PC 03-23.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 03-23 is also an application from Blue Earth County. It's a request for review and approval of an ordinance amendment to Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 20, the zoning chapter. Also, it's not in the heading here, but it would also be Chapter 20, which is the Land Division chapter, and I'll explain that in just a second here. But the amendment addresses public road frontage and lot width requirements on newly created lots in agricultural and conservation districts, and amends the height, yard, lot area, lot width, and depth regulations in all zoning districts for consistency. So, the amendment, really what it's doing is it's changing our required lot frontage from 150 feet in the agricultural and conservation districts down to 33 feet in both of those districts. Also, the Chapter 20 reference that I had, that's the Land Division Section of the county code. Currently, that only allows a 33-foot lot width requirement for existing lots. So, the amendment is saying that any new lot would be able to have a 33-foot lot frontage in both agricultural and conservation districts. So, for consistency, it's amending the zoning chapter as well as the land division chapter. And then, the other changes to the zoning chapter of the code are just language changes for consistency, wording changes to make sure that all the sections of the code are worded the same with relation to, you know, the setbacks as well as lot area standards. At the Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the staff report. There was no public comment. The Planning Commission briefly discussed the amendment, and acknowledged that it has been discussed for several years and may, as it was currently written with the 150-foot requirement, prevent areas of cropland from being taken out of production. Following discussion, the Planning Commission voted for a recommendation for approval of the amendment to the county board based on the findings in the staff report. And the board action today is adoption of the ordinance amendment based on the findings recommended by the Planning Commission.
At this time, we'll open up for public comment on PC 03-23. The hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and I will ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 03-23? Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 03-23? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 03-23? If not, we will close the public comment portion. Are there any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair, I guess I just want to thank staff and the Planning Commission and everybody on this. I think this is going to be very helpful in the ag area. In my two short years on the board, this has been an issue a time or two already. I know there's future plans where you've got people who maybe like to buy some conservation acres or something like that, have a limited budget, of course, and having to spend it on expensive farmland to get to those conservation acres. This will just allow them to still have access, but less of a bill for ag land that they don't want, and more resources than available for conservation land that they're looking for. So, appreciate the hard work on this. This is a, this is a good thing.
Anyone else comment? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, the same? It passes. On now, P&amp;Z Staff read Report Number 04-23.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 04-23 is a request for review and approval from Blue Earth County for an amendment to the Blue Earth County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 24, zoning. The amendment addresses essential services in the definitions and word usage section and uses section of the agricultural, conservation, rural residence, rural townsite, general business, and light industry districts. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the staff report, and there was no public comment. Mr. Brunder provided background on the public works facility siting process. He stated that the property tax impact is being considered on properties under review. He also stated that the county board desires a location allowing the facility to be hooked up to municipal sewer service and possibly water. Ideally, the facility would be located near County Road 90. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted to forward a recommendation of approval of the amendment to the county board based on the findings prepared by staff. The board action is adoption of the ordinance amendment based on findings recommended by the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, we'll be open for public comment on PC 04-23. The hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes. And I will ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 04-23? Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 04-23? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 04-23? If not, we will close the public comment portion. Are there any more comments from the board?
We all seen this at the work session at great length. Appreciate the staff putting that stuff together. I think it was worthwhile, but Planning Zoning has some good questions, but we're very supportive of this action.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the adoption of the ordinance amendment based on the findings recommended by the Planning Commission.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And opposed, the same? It passes. This concludes the planning, zoning, public thing.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work. I really appreciate it. All right. And we'll pop right to John.
Morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning, John. How are you?
Doing well. All right. This morning, I agreed to you a contracted bed agreement with Prairie Lakes Youth Programs. Attached to the memo, you'll find a contract agreement with Prairie Lakes for one secure bed per day at their program in Wilmer. And this agreement will secure a bed in both the Toledo's Passage Secure Detention side of their program and the Secure Corrections Program. And this contract is going to run for the balance of 2023. It will actually be effective February 1st of 2023. We had hoped to get it in place January 1st of 2023 for the full calendar year, but we're just working out some internal stuff, and it just happened to work out where we just got it to the board for approval now. And so, we're going to take this effect of starting February 1st for the rest of the calendar year. So, this is securing for us a bed that can be used for, like I said, both secure detention, so holding a juvenile while they're waiting maybe for their placement or into another programming unit over at the Prairie Lakes Youth Program, but they also operate programming within their secure unit as well. So, this is kind of something that can be able to be used just to hold somebody, but also to receive programming at the same time. And we've been working on these issues with our case managers where we're unable to find beds. And we've talked about this both with our advisory board and in various settings at work sessions where securing the bed will hopefully be a way to know that we have a spot to go. And it's not just for males, can also be used for females. We also have, recently had a contract approved with Carver County. That's only an eight-day facility. But this is really trying to take care of where we will take kids in the event that they are picked up on a warrant or have a new arrest. And so, the per diem would be $365 a day. And because this is both for secure detention and secure programming, any cost for any unused bed days would be split between community corrections and human services. So, with the contract, we work closely with Phil and Julie Stevermark and Ann Broskop to kind of work through some of that language and talk about our usage of the facility. Prairie Lakes is a facility that we use frequently, and taking a look at over the years' history of our usage there as well to make sure that this would be something that we want to do. And we're going to do it for the rest of 2023, and then we'll reevaluate to see if this is something we want to continue to do. This is the first year that we've gotten into the business of doing a contract with facilities like this for juveniles, but it isn't uncommon in other counties. Nicola County's joined us on the Carver contract. Steel and Wasik are doing something with Anoka facility. We just had an article recently where Olmsted County's contracting with Anoka as well. And so, you see this happening, and we've talked about the lack of secure bed space across the state. So, I would just respectfully request that the commissioners approve the contract of bed agreement between Blue Earth County and Prairie Lakes Youth Programs.
I will make that motion.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I think this hits me because we're talking $365 a day even if nobody's there.
Correct.
So, that's, you know, $133,000 that we're paying out whether they're there or not.
Yep.
What is the chance that nobody will be there?
So, there's always that chance, but there's also the chance we would have two. And so, you're looking at the ability to use those bed days, you know, in the event that you have two juveniles there, you would still be using those bed days at that 365 rate. So, like right now, as an example, we don't have anybody in the secure unit, but we did in January, but they had been able to get out into the non-secure unit. And so, there's And so there's that chance, but looking at history of use, just on the secure detention side specifically, last year was the first year in four years, we did not get to 365 days. And so we were close to 700 days, and this is just secure. This isn't including the programming side even that Human Services also utilizes. And so we had bed days of 700, 750. I think one year was close to 900. And so these are kids that, you know, may end up having to stay there for long-term periods of time. So I'm fairly confident that we'll be able to, you know, use the contract as it is. And in the event it's not, you know, we would obviously reevaluate and figure out if this is something we want to continue to do. But it is something that you wonder, you know, is it going to be something that we utilize? And, you know, this is the first time we're going to step into this contract, and it's going to be a really interesting year where we'll be watching to see how our usage is. We don't advocate for the use of secured detention, you know. You'd like to keep kids in the community. And so you talk about, you know, do you want to get into this and will you use it? In some aspects, you hope that your use of secured detention, you don't have to utilize it or utilize it as little as possible, but we are continually running into the situation where we don't have that bed or we need one. And so this also gives that peace of mind. The savings are very minimal on the per diem. This is what the facility has done. The rates continue to increase every year. You know, there was an increased $75 per diem increase for this year for Prairie Lakes, but that the transport officer or the deputy in the middle of the night knowing where they can go and there will be a bed available for them, I think is also something that, you know, is to be considered because I think that is where we struggled at times too is on a weekend at night, where are we going to go when we have a, you know, deputy or probation officer calling five, six different facilities? And not being able to secure that bed has been something that we've experienced time and time again recently. So this also hopefully will address that and we'll know that, okay, if, you know, Carver's full, we'll be able to go over to Prairie Lakes. And we took care of Carver first because of proximity. So we got that one done first, and now this is that, okay, in the event that they're full, Prairie Lakes, yes, a little bit further, but we know that we would have that bed available over there as well.
Good information. Thank you very much. All right. We got a motion. We got a second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
And we jump right into Human Services, Bob.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Phil.
Good morning. Good morning.
How are you?
Doing well.
I'm very pleased to share that Shanna Hood's here, who's our chairperson for our advisory committee. She's been doing that for a number of years, but we had our COVID setback where we didn't get together face to face, and we also then tried to prevent the spread of virus by not coming here before you. But the great advantage of her speaking for both our advisory committee and also the task forces is an add that I know the board has appreciated over time. So, and I'll let her tell you a little bit about her background just at the beginning, her work in the school systems. And I'm going to run through my report now, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of action items to start. First being from the Mental Health Center and Melinda Henderson, the name of her company, ETH Behavioral Health Services. The purpose of this addendum is really to just extend her contract. She has eight hours per week of medication management that's in this part of the contract. We also have a complimentary contract with the state who she's employed by as well. And so there's a little bit of a split picture here, but this one is eight hours plus the clinical directorship. And this is something by statute that we are supposed to have as part of our clinic. You'll see that it's prorated at $10,000, the stipend for her hours because she is not at full time. And then there's also a 3.5% increase, $4.03 per hour, and the total of her contract is The term of this additional addendum is January 1st of '23 through December 31st of '23. Then, Mr. Chair, the second item, chemical health, Zumbro Valley. The board's passed through a number of contracts for detox. This is one of, I think, four that we have, and it is used, Zumbro Valley, whenever someone is detained by law enforcement within our county borders and when no bed is available at Brown County Evaluation Center. So that's always our primary provider. Per diem rate has not gone up at this facility. It's $438 a day, and the term, January 1st of '23 through December 31st of '23. And those are my action items for the day.
All right. I would ask for a motion. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And that passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, yes, just some informational discussion items to go over from public health, and then I'll hand it over to Shanna. Disease prevention and control is the story I'm telling you today, and we have several sides to look at. The first of those being about latent TB case management. I included the notes from Kelly just because some of this gets in the weeds a little bit, but I think it's important to know kind of the depth of the practice that we have and what our purpose is. Obviously, there's both latent TB, which is tuberculosis, which is not infectious, and then there's active disease, which is infectious. It usually impacts the lungs, but it can impact other areas as well. So it's like a cold that you can get in your eye or a cold that you can get in your joint, and it acts that way. There are lengthy medication regimes that are used, and depending on what strain and circumstance, up to two years of medication is sometimes required. Can also include lengthy hospitalizations since if the infection takes place at a high level, it can be life threatening. And so you see that full range of impact that can go over several months. And then as people are isolated and sometimes quarantined to their home, the risk of the depression and the anxiety and concerns about stigma and retaining your job, all kinds of other pieces come into play. And so we do work in concert with the Mental Health Center and other disciplines within Human Services to help serve those folks that are in this hard situation. The second slide is the active TB, and you'll see how many hours are put into these efforts. And Kelly's real emphasis here is that the number of cases is often not reflected in the number of hours. So in other words, there's an intensity of case management for folks that are infected with tuberculosis. You'll see in a year like 2018, there were 10 cases, 4,000 hours, and in 2020, there were 11 cases at 761 hours. What that goes to is the contacts, and we do contact investigation. So basically, I describe it as throwing a net around the circumstance. If you're working at a plant where there's hundreds of people, all those people maybe were exposed, and so we have to interview them about any kind of symptomology that appears and try to contain that spread if we can. And then, as you can imagine, it's who those people also gain contact with. If they do have any symptoms, then we have to keep going. And so that's why the hours add up and why certain cases can really throw us. You'll see even in 2019 that there were almost 3,000 hours of effort for seven cases. So those cases are more involved, they had a lot of contact with other people, and we try to keep that spread from happening. Just in the narrative, under factors, one case went back almost two years where we had to backtrack, and then one had 500 contacts. That's a really high number. And of those 500, 200 of those we needed to follow up with. So those are kind of those high-end examples. Also, the very last comment about multi-drug resistant TB. There are some variants that don't respond well to certain medications and those regimes and take two years to fully complete and a lot of doctor time to help us manage those situations again. The next slide is on public health staff hours, and that was represented in that more complex slide. But like COVID, you can imagine for our public health staff, the fear of. So you get into a case and you go, what do we have here? Is this going to be mushrooming big or is this going to be something we can get a lid on? And so I think that's something that they carry with them, just like we all do now with, you know, if we have a little cough, what is it? So what could happen is a big deal. And then, as you all know and you saw during COVID, is our staff don't have a choice. They're going to do mission no matter what. So when we do get several cases, which has happened, where they're very involved, which has happened, they get pulled into this trench that's a pretty big and deep trench. And there's really no other way but to try to plow through that and try to help the people that are in a vulnerable spot. The final slide is about COVID and some of the hours, and you'll see our significant peak during 2021, just starting to look back at some of the data. Kelly has in the notes the FTE equivalent, so the staffing equivalents in 2020, you know, the hours represent three FTEs, then in '21, it was almost seven, and now in '22, we had a nice drop off, which we were really hoping for, yes. And then you'll see in the notes in the second or third line there about homebound 2022, we continue to offer services for homebound individuals, correctional settings, and then the community partners, which is Kelly's last comment here about the partnerships that were formed during COVID. And I can't overemphasize with all health partners. We really, I think our community really rallied around the need and worked together very well, specifically with Open Door, Well Share, and Minnesota Council of Churches. We had some really nice bridges built, and we expect to maintain those now into the future. So there are some areas of strength that came from a very tough situation that we were all thrown into. And then just our whole goal, obviously, is decreasing risk. And then the vaccinations per hour, the tag team approach, Kelly kind of explains this, but if we could stand side by side with another provider and we could do a flu vaccine and they could do a COVID vaccine, the risk of any kind of measures was lower, and we could also do them much quicker. So there was an efficiency of setting up clinic that way, side by side. So that was one of the learning points, too, that she put in there. That's really what I had to share today about some of our disease prevention and control in public health. I'm going to hand it off to Shanna.
All right.
Good morning, Shanna.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Seen you for a while.
I know. It's nice to meet you or re-meet many of you again. My name is Shanna Hood. I have been on the Human Services Advisory Committee for eight years, and I actually started as the chairperson. I was elected to the chairperson position about January of 2020, and I came to this meeting exactly three years ago and had my first presentation, and now I'm back here again to see you all again. So thank you for having me. My history is I've lived in Mankato since 2011, and I've served as both a school psychologist and school counselor for our Mankato area students in that time, and I'm currently a school counselor. So just to kind of jump into the Human Services Advisory Committee, we meet four times a year, and we have the opportunity to meet with Phil or Angie at each of those meetings along with, I like to say, the, some of the head honchos of each of the departments there. I feel very privileged, honestly, that they take the time out of their schedule to come meet with us on an evening that they could be with their family and share a lot of information and answer honestly a lot of questions so that we can learn and grow from them. It's a great opportunity. So with that, so we meet about quarterly, and so we have, even for this year and did this last year, we'll talk about the human services budget at one of the meetings, our social services programs at another, financial assistance or income maintenance programs. And then lastly, at our last meeting, we'll talk about public health programs. And so we're kind of cycling through some of those to gain knowledge and try to do, have a well-rounded view of what is occurring in our community. So we also have been in off-cycle meetings, too. So for example, there was a grant that was available for youth that had a very narrow focus, and Blue Earth County leadership invited both the Human Services Advisory Committee and also the Social Services and Mental Health Task Force to join in for a meeting to brainstorm what can we do with this grant money? We have some left over. We can't use it on an existing program. We can't use it to hire somebody. We can't use it for this, but we want to make an impact. And it was amazing. Maybe you have heard of the Never Give Up Mental Health Expo that happened here in, I believe it was December. It hasn't gone that fast yet. About a month ago. They, I was incredibly impressed with the Human Services leadership and the people involved. They were able to pull together a suicide prevention speaker and provide not only opportunity for the community to come together, to be able to connect to our local mental health resources and also learn from a suicide survivor who had quite, is an amazing story in and of itself. He jumped off the Golden Gate Bridge, which happens every seven to 10 days. Only out of that time, it's been up for 70 years, the Golden Gate Bridge. So every 70, this is an example of his story, and he provides a lot of opportunity for growth and help for suicide survival. But he is a, he is very unique that he survived. Every seven to 10 days, somebody jumps off that bridge. Since it's been erected 70 years ago, only 36 people have ever survived that in the entire history, and he is only one of five who can still both walk, talk, and doesn't have paralysis. So his story, he feels that he was called to be able to spread opportunity and hope, and I really do feel that he provided that for the people that was in the room, and it really did provide a service for some of our community members. So I was really proud of Blue Earth County, their leadership, and how they pulled this together in just, I think it was six weeks, they pulled together this. And we had all of our community providers there. It was a really wonderful opportunity. Also, they provided opportunity to, for our local mental health providers to be able to get some professional development, which honestly was really, really good, coming from somebody who's been in the profession. So I was very, very pleased. So with that, those off-cycle meetings have provided some really good inputs, and we've come together on that, and I really appreciate those off-cycle meetings, too. So with that, one of the things that does continually come up is the placements, placements and bed availability for our youth. That's something that has continually come up since I've honestly been on the board. I do think that there's a lot of work that's being done to strategically move forward to try to make that better. Like, for example, I know I heard it earlier, Julie Stever, I always struggle.
Steve.
Stever, it's a little mouthful for me. That she's really working on mapping out and how can we better place our youth, where are gaps, where are issues? And then that even comes back from, like as you were just talking, like, okay, we have, from the PC we're just talking about, we have a student who is, has behavioral and civil difficulties and needs a place. Where can we go? Other times, students are taken to the emergency room with suicide risk, mental health risk, et cetera. And right now, we continue to have, especially even for our youth, an issue of bed placements. We have kids living in our emergency room. And so I do, just on a personal level, I appreciate, even though it's a hard number, we do have a place where our kids can go because I cannot imagine my child or my friend's child or your grandkids or children having to have a mental health episode. child or your grandkids or children having to have a mental health episode and needing to live in the emergency room for at least three days as average right now. And to then maybe find a placement out of state that's hours away from their family. So I appreciate that there's a lot of work and intentionality that our human services department and also that you guys are working on continually trying to better that to support our youth so they can continue to grow and thrive. Otherwise, I was just going to state that we've also had some other really great updates over the years. I don't want to go into all of those. Just most recently, we also chatted with Ann Broskoff. I scan, I always get her name a lot.
Oh, that's right.
Ann, and just got an update on our foster care. Foster care, we usually have about 70 to 90 students. I say students, says I work in a school, youth in foster care placements at any given time. And just got to learn a little bit more about that. And also the impact when you have a large family come through or multiple large families of how that can unfortunately create larger caseloads and reduce some of the services that can be provided because you get an overwhelming amount of caseloads. But it was really good to see that we have some good, great foster services in our area and also foster care homes. We are very lucky, like compared to the cities. The cities, they really do have a lot more of the group homes or those type of placements. And I'm glad that we can, I think that they're very mindful. I don't think, I know that Blue Earth County's staff is very mindful of trying to do what's best for kids and they're really always trying to do their best with what they have. And then also, we recently spoke to, with Lynette Ayers and she gave us a lot of information on environmental accessibility adaptation. So if somebody has a disability, whether it's they were born with it or became, or came to have a disability, just what are some minor adaptations that they can have in their home, such as adding a grab bar or other, or adding a wheelchair ramp so that they're able to maintain some independence and reduce actually the load on Blue Earth County for other services or the state. And I appreciated hearing about those things too. So that's kind of what I have. And I just wanted to wrap up by saying in my eight years, I truly have to say I'm really impressed with our human services leadership and the people who work there. I'm a pretty good judge of character and their hearts are really in the right place. So, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I just talked probably more than I was supposed to, but.
Fine, it was a very good report. You're very energetic and very passionate.
We haven't heard for quite a while, so it's great to have you.
Yeah, I hope it works under your schedule, you can come back once someone else.
Yes. Yeah, I will, now that we're back into more of the kind of the swing of a normal routine, I will be back after each of our quarterly meetings, so you'll see me again in the future.
It's nice you have the flexibility to do that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you very much for, for a person that understands people with special needs. School counselors are huge help for families. Sometimes they don't understand that they have a child with special needs and that's, you know, to get the IAP and to get, get things going in the school system to help that family out is huge. So I appreciate the work you do there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, Bob, we're going to get right into administration, so go ahead.
All right, Mr. Chair. First item is county board minutes for January 3rd.
I'll move the minutes.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And that passes.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Oh, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the bills?
Can't find anything to.
No, there wasn't anything exciting.
If we played the music sometime, I could stump, try to stump them.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number eight in your packet. It is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We have just informational items for the board today. Filled a number of positions, starting with a transport officer, a temporary position there. And then we filled a part-time correctional officer as well as a full-time correctional officer in the jail. We also have filled an assistant county attorney position. We did have a couple of resignations, starting with an environmental services supervisor. And so we've initiated recruitment to fill that position. We also had a change of employment status for a 911 telecommunicator or dispatch individual who's leaving our organization but has been willing to stay on, kind of on call. So that's helpful to us. We have begun recruitment to refill that dispatcher position then as well. We also had a resignation of a human services supervisor. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then resignation of a technical support specialist in our IT department and have initiated recruitment to refill that position. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
No, go ahead.
All right. Item number nine in your packet then is the financial status report for December 31st. This is the end of our fiscal year, so you'll see our total revenues for 2022 came in at just under 111 million against expenses of just under 121 million. So we had about a $10 million deficit. That was not really surprising. We had budgeted for some level of deficit, but we also had a situation where we received turnback dollars for County Road One last, or in 2021. So the revenue came in, in a previous year, but we finished out that third phase of that project in 2022. So we had cash in the bank to pay for that project. Some other items, maybe just a call to your attention is our total tax levy. The collections were strong and so we were just slightly above the projected. So we did collect some back taxes is what that would tell us. The transportation sales tax, again, is kind of a positive story in that we were almost $2 million above our projections. Again, with COVID, we weren't optimistic when this budget was pulled together that, that trend line would continue, but it has. And so we're now over $8 million in sales tax revenue for our roads. On the downside, the interest on our investments, obviously with the volatility in the market and some of that, we certainly have seen some change in market value. So we are continuing to earn interest earnings, but the market value of some of those investments have changed. On the expense side, most of our expense lines were just slightly above our budget. Some of that as a result of not only those road projects, but we did receive some of those American Rescue Plan federal dollars that, you know, not only increased our revenue but caused some additional expenditures that show up in this budget. So overall, you know, even though here I am saying a $10 million deficit, it is explainable and somewhat expected. So we'll continue to watch that though going forward. On the enterprise fund, the Ponderosa landfill, positive story here in terms of total revenues at 5.3 million against expenses of 2.4 million. Positive in the sense of the financial aspects. It does also suggest that we are getting more garbage brought to the landfill, which is an obvious concern because it's not a, a resource that is not going to be utilized fully. So we want to be careful about that and continue to keep seeing a reduction in use of that On the second page then is the cash and investment balances. You'll see towards the top, our total available funds are now sitting at just over 55 million against a six-month operating needs of 51.7 million dollars. We have a lot of dedicated funds, obviously. I would maybe draw your attention to the law library that with the fee increases that have been implemented there, we're slowly bringing that fund out of the hole. So that's a positive thing to note as well. Closer to the bottom of the page, you'll see total county funds sit at about 125.6 million, down about, what, 7 million from the prior year. Again, expected with the draw on some of those reserves that we mentioned earlier. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on our financial status report.
Any questions?
Nope.
We're doing good. Go ahead.
All right. Item number 10 in the packet then, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is the, our fourth quarter donations, in terms of monetary donations, primarily donations to the library. You'll see those listed there. We also did receive some donations for our anticipated purchase of a veteran's van sometime in the future. And so those are listed there as well. Total monetary gifts were $3,245. Then we also had in-kind contributions, again, mostly to the library and those are listed. And then on the third page, you start to see our list of time given to the library. So those are volunteer services that are provided to the library. So at this point, if there are no questions, we're just asked that the board make a motion to accept those donations.
So moved, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions on the library donations or the quarter, the donations? Most of them went to the library, I guess. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes. Looks like we're done.
That's all I have. You have your commissioners' reports.
All right. So let's start with Patty this morning.
All righty. Well, we started off with the department head meeting on the 4th, work session on the 10th, mayors and clerks in Mapleton and got to view that beautiful school. On the 17th was the NACO regional meeting. The 19th, I had an AMC interview to be on the NACO board, which I was not picked, but Vance was, so congratulations Vance, you received on the NACO board. And on the 20th, I had orientation with Community Ed Advisory Council. That's my report.
All right, Kevin.
As already mentioned, I attended department heads, the work session, mayors and clerks. Also on January 5th, soil water conservation district meeting with KIP. On the 12th, participated in the drainage work group meeting. 13th was Goberba, Greater Blue Earth River Basin Authority Policy Committee. We had a JD 11 hearing on the 17th. And yesterday, I participated in PACE and RMEB PACE is the Property Assess Clean Energy Subcommittee that I represent Blue Earth County as part of the Rural Minnesota Energy Board. Also yesterday afternoon, we had our True Transit Advisory Committee meeting. That completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mark.
Okay, January 4th, you have department head and we had the work session and the January, what is the work session? January 6th, had an All Seasons Arena meeting. And then on January 10th, did have a county board work session. That's where I should have that. And January 11th, did have a rural, I mean, our regional economic development authority meeting that was here. And then we had a MICA meeting, KIP and I, on the afternoon into Wednesday. And then January 12th, did have mayors and clerks in Mapleton. That was actually, that's a, that was a really nice school there. Good facility. And had AMC this Thursday there, up in the cities. We were there, I was with Vance and Blair Nelson, who was the director for District Seven, he got elected to the head of the general government committee. So I'd be in the alternate and I'm now the director for at least a year.
Congratulations.
Yeah. And then lastly, we do have our Pedal Pass Poverty event on bikes on the 25th of February. So I'll be looking forward to getting support from my colleagues for that event. It is the largest fundraiser for our partners for housing. Yeah, they kind of changed it around because they thought it was too long or something. So they're going down to eight members of a team. So I don't know, we'll see how that goes. That means I have to get more money, I guess. Thank you all.
Concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
All right, Kip.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After our last board meeting, other than the meetings that were already mentioned with mayors and clerks and a couple of the others we all went to, planning and zoning, which we already heard about that this morning. This is one of those meetings that just gets, gets to us before I get to my report. Had my SECB Legislative Committee meeting first, we're getting spooled up for the upcoming session with a couple of items, we're taking forward to them. Had also a finance committee meeting for my SECB. And then we also had our full SECB board meeting, which that, that takes up a lot of time and very informative and very informational, but it just is a lot of meetings. But most of them are by Zoom, so it's pretty easy to participate with them. Last night, had a joint powers for the South Central workforce. Everything's moving along fairly well. We got our annual report and gave a copy of it to Bob, if anybody would like to see it, with all the activity we had in the county. And we had our MVA C meeting last night and got a couple of new members from, from some other counties, people that retired and got some new elected officers there. And then a few ditch and county road issues with snow plowing. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, I go back to January 4th, we had our department head meeting. On January 5th, I had a NACO Transportation Committee meeting. On January 6th, I had a State Transportation Plans Policy Advisory Committee. January 9th, I had a TDS Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund meeting. And then that afternoon, I had a detox meeting in New Ulm. On the 10th, I had a county board work session that we are all at. That afternoon, I had a Transportation Alliance Board of Directors meeting. On the 11th, I had a Blue Earth County Community Corrections meeting, followed by a TZD, Blue Earth Nicola County Safe Roads. On the 12th, I had a library board meeting, followed by our mayors and clerks meeting. And again, that was an amazing school that they, they showed us down there in Mapleton. On the 18th, I had a NACO Transportation and USDOT combined meeting. On the 19th, I was at the AMC board meeting and interviewed for the NACO board and I was honored to be chosen as one of three people that was, was selected. So I'm pretty humbled to be, be chosen, one of three people representing the state of Minnesota at a national level. Yesterday, I met with Bob to review the board agenda for today. And then I had a NACO Arts and Cultural Commission meeting in the afternoon. And that's the end of mine. I would ask for a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess. Thank you.
Good job, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
So I got a question.